Thank you. Begin with a moment of silence for the following. Jean Salaji, retiree of the North Syracuse Central School District. Thank you. Joanne Heffernan, a graduate of the North Syracuse- Begin with a moment of silence for the following. Central School District. Jean Salaji, retiree of the North Syracuse Central School District. Thank you. Joanne Heffernan, a graduate of the North Syracuse- Begin with a moment of silence for the following. Central School District. Jean Salaji, retiree of the North Syracuse Central School District. Thank you. Joanne Heffernan. Yeah. So I'm going to begin again with the moment of silence. Jean Salaji, a retiree of the North Syracuse Central School District. Joshua Heffernan, a graduate of the North Syracuse Central School District. Eugene Capello, a graduate of the North Syracuse Central School District. Mary Hackman, a graduate of the North Syracuse Central School District. Sharon Thompson, a graduate of the North Syracuse Central School District. And James Carr, a graduate of the North Syracuse Central School District. Thank you. Okay, we're going to begin with something exciting and positive. We have a presentation for an award. The North Syracuse Central School District's champion of change recognition. So we have Ms. Rufo from NISBA here, New York State School Boards Association.
So we have Sandra Rufo from the New York State School Boards Association here with us. Area four director to present Champions of Change Award to the representative of the CAST program. Sandra will talk about why the group was selected for this unsolicited recognition, but we are honored to be here tonight to recognize the group in front of our board. The CAST program, which stands for Cicero Area Student Theater, was formed to allow students to continue performing music, theater, and dance despite COVID pandemic. The dedicated team of professionals leading the group worked diligently to provide opportunities for students to continue performing during the pandemic. Our students and the district are lucky to have these kinds of caring people. Welcome Sandra, and thank you for honoring this group.
Thank you very much. I truly am honored to be here tonight. I think you're my furthest district north because I'm in Binghamton, and so I don't get up here as often as I wish. The Champions of Change Recognition was initiated by NISBA about two and a half years ago. And it was a new recognition, in recognition that there are many, many wonderful things that are happening within our districts, but it's not necessarily an award that someone gets, but it's a recognition. It's not through nomination. You can't like, someone from your district can't call us up and say, "We have a wonderful program. We'd like you to consider it." So it's really kind of by word of mouth, if it's an eclipse and we see it, which is perhaps how we saw yours. When it first started, I was actually the chairman of the committee, and I'm kind of glad I was chairman for two years, but I never wanted people to think that I'm always picking the ones because it's a committee. It's not just one person. So I have not been on the committee, and I wasn't on the committee when yours was selected. These awards are given for unique programs, things that are different. They can be student-initiated, they can be school-initiated, but they're unique. And your program of what happened to your theater students during COVID, during the pandemic, and how you turned that around and made it a positive for the students in recognition of what they were going through was amazing. Now, I believe you had your musical in April, correct? So I'd love to hear how the musical was, but I think it's still on YouTube, right? So I will watch it. But you're the three ladies, or four of you are here.
And what we'll do, let's call them up and they can talk a little bit more.
I wish you would tell us about the program.
So Kimberly Panic Edwards. Karen Patterson. Lisa Stewart. Renee Frontal. We're going to turn the microphone over to you if you want to say a few words of how you were able to bring everyone together.
Sure. So last year, our musical was changed because COVID happened, and we were able to perform one of our performances for Tuck Everlasting, but the next day is when the world shut down. So it ended up that we were able to perform to a limited audience, and we figured out how to write and contact the owners who actually wrote Tuck Everlasting and contacted them to perform two more times, but livestreamed via Facebook. So we got permission from him somehow with the help of our kids. And they all found him, and it was, it was an amazing thing that came together. And we performed. And then from there, we held weekly karaoke sessions with the kids because we saw that their spirits were so down on Zoom. Yep, on Zoom. And they would express how, you know, they were, they had these trying times, and we would do it through music. They'd sing their songs, they would do monologues, and sometimes we'd just talk because they really needed that connection at that time. And so after that, we're like, we need to do something more. And we developed the Cicero Area Student Theater Program through CAST, and we wanted to give them an experience that was safe and rewarding so that they could continue to perform and, you know, have this outlet that they've been lacking because, you know, they've been stuck in their house and, and they didn't have that connection. But theater makes us feel connected to each other. It makes us feel human, or at least if we don't feel like ourselves, we can be someone else for a little bit. So after that, it was an amazing experience. And our musical for the next year was very different. You know, we got approved to do a musical after, you know, countless and countless weeks. We didn't, we didn't know because none of us knew, right? And we actually, in a very limited time, I wrote an entire musical, the book for it. Karen wrote all the musical arrangements, and Lisa Stewart did all the original choreography. Renee came up with the concept, the look of the show. She came up with the name of the show. And from the ground up, we, the kids and our team, we developed the show. All ours, all original, and it was beautiful. And we all worked together. We couldn't do it without the other person, without the kids. And it was so rewarding, not only making something our own, but all these ideas that came from it and seeing the kids shine and grow. And you started to see themselves again, like they were human again. And everything didn't seem so hard. It helped us just as much as I feel like it helped them. So, you know, we love this more than words can say. You have no idea how honored we feel to be receiving this. And we want to continue to do things like this for the kids in the future. So thank you so much.
Well, I cannot truly think of, I've been to a few of these presentations. And I sincerely want to say I cannot think of a recognition that I've been a part of giving that is any more worthy than yours. It's really wonderful.
Thank you so much.
Well, I don't know who the ladies need to-
You too.
Okay, next up, we should have Roxboro Road Elementary here for the BPT. If you can come forward, it's all yours. That's Building Planning Team presentation.
What we're going to do is, Mr. Stone is the Director of Elementary Education, and he's going to set the stage like he did last year of what you're going to be looking at, how things are set up as far as data, and so that it'll help interpret what you're going to be seeing from both buildings.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Bowles. Just real briefly, before the teams come up here, there's just a few areas I wanted to point out to the board and the audience, and some changes in these presentations. But first, I'd like to point out tonight, you're going to hear from Roxboro Elementary and Smith Road Elementary, two of our six elementary schools. What will be reported on is a, it's a continuation from past school years as we build these into a model where it is viewed by the audience and the board in a way that's, that's meaningful. But there's a few things that have changed in the last couple of years. Obviously, COVID plays into that and some new reporting tools I just want to make mention of. Tonight, you're going to hear on four focus areas of chronic absenteeism, social-emotional learning, core content of ELA and math, and professional learning communities. So just a few notes before the presentations start and some changes from the past. The buildings will be reporting as well we should on chronic absenteeism. We know that has an enormous impact on any student kindergarten through 12th grade. Just for the board and the audience to recognize, this is a very difficult one to measure currently due to the pandemic. Last year, we had a model of two days in session, and we had school where students were virtual, so that certainly plays into the numbers you're looking at. This year, mandatory quarantines, positive students that are on quarantine, that has a significant impact on some, some numbers as well. So most importantly, what you're going to hear in the presentations are the strategies the buildings are using to address chronic absenteeism and to, most importantly, support our students in getting them into school and supporting our families in the varying needs. So that's, that's just something I wanted to point out. For the social-emotional learning data, you're going to be seeing some data from our BIMAS 2 screening tool, which I know the board has been hearing much about. This is the first year we've implemented it district-wide, and so the data sets are really kind of a starting point for us as a district. That's going to help us measure how our students are responding, social-emotionally. For ELA and math, something important to point out, we do have a new screening tool. So the data sets you're looking at are the first time you're seeing data. These are the, these, all students in kindergarten through 4th grade were tested this past fall for their first screening. So we don't have historical data to compare against. One thing to just note when you're looking at the data sets, you can certainly kind of look grade to grade, kindergarten to first, first to second, but I would suggest not making any conclusions from that data because they're different groups of students. Moving it forward in the future, you will be able to see historical data and how we're closing that gap across time. And then finally, our last focus area is professional learning communities, which is an ongoing focus for our district, focusing on best practices for professional learning for our teachers and supporting all of our, all of our students. So I'm going to turn it over now to Roxboro Road Elementary to kick things off for elementary. Thank you.
So we're going to just have to re-log in here real quick, I think. But while we're going through that, I just want to thank everybody for the opportunity to come in and share some of the great things that are happening at Roxboro and to, just to recognize the, the great staff that we have and the dedication and commitment that is made each and every day to our students at Roxboro. So we'll pull this up hopefully momentarily. Yes, all right. So this year at Roxboro, we're super excited to have all of our students and staff back five days a week. As you heard from Mr. Stone earlier, last year's model had two days a week for the better part of the school year for our students. So we're excited to have five days a week learning going on at Roxboro. The last two years has certainly given us a lot of work to do to help support our students and make sure that they make and show enough growth over those, to make up for those last two years. Our mantra this year, our slogan this year is, and you're going to hear that throughout our presentation, is called Grow the Green. And that'll make some sense as you see some of the graphics and slides coming up throughout our presentation here this, this evening. And that will be really in reference to our ELA, math, and BIMAS screening data. And we're excited to share some of the tools and strategies that we put in place at Roxboro to help our students to grow the green. All right, just a little bit about our building. So this year, we've seen a decrease in both the number of students. We're about 50 students less this year than, than in previous years, and we're down four staff members this current school year. We also have two additional programs throughout our building. We have the skate program through Bosse's where we're excited to have those students in the skate program that push into our classrooms whenever possible to help participate in, in learning across our building. And we have, really excited to have two new UPK programs, our classrooms in our school this year for the very first time. So they're a wonderful addition to our school, both programs. Our AIS department here currently works with a total of 226 students in math and/or reading throughout the course of, of the school days and weeks here. So that's quite a large number, really indicative of, of the, the hard work of the AIS department, also the amount of work that needs to be done to help support our students to, to be successful and to narrow some of those gaps that you're going to see. And also this year, we have a 3% increase in the number of free or reduced lunch and breakfast students this, this current school year. That's an up, up, like I said, 3% from, from last year, which is still a little bit down, typically run somewhere around 70% historically in free or reduced lunches. And then finally, we just, we've lost a total of 127, or had a total of 127 students either exit or enter Roxboro Road during this current school year. Just a quick look at our, our mission and vision. This has not changed in the last couple of years or so, so I'm not going to spend a whole lot of time here. Okay. All right. So as you heard from, from Mr. Stone a moment ago, chronic absenteeism is one of our, our great challenges in education, and it's certainly one of the areas that we focus on over at Roxboro Elementary. The addition, the pandemic has really seen a great increase in the number of students that are considered to be chronically absent. Those are students that have missed 18 or more days of school throughout the current school year. So we've seen an, an 8% jump from the 2019, 2020 school year up to our, the most recent past school year. And to help address some of those struggles with, with getting students to attend school consistently. So we've set a target goal of 14.2% of our students to be chronically absent. That number was really what we had set in place the year that the pandemic began. We were well on target to hit that mark. And then, now like I said, the pandemic hit, and attendance at that point has basically been kind of almost in a free, free fall. So to help along those lines, we've got an attendance committee that meets on a regular basis to help focus and support students in coming to school regularly. So to do that, we help to, we track data to identify students with a pattern or history of chronic attendance struggles or those that are considered to be at risk for chronic attendance problems. Our family engagement specialists and our student engagement specialists reach out and connect with students and families to help identify any barriers or obstacles that present themselves as a, as a reason why students may not be attending school on a regular basis. And one of the things that we're really excited to utilize this year is the idea of a check-in, check-out system or model where we have, we work to build positive relationships and connections that hopefully help foster the, the types of relationships necessary to have students come on a consistent basis to school. We have a family engagement specialist. Yep. Was it this one here? Yep. So we have a, a family engagement specialist. It's on the, on the last bullet at the bottom. Yep, yes. So they, they meet with students, they meet with families, they reach out on the phone. We do some Zoom meetings. Again, the idea is to, to build connections between the families in the community and our school and to really identify what's the reason, what's the root cause of why this particular student is struggling to attend on a regular basis. Absolutely.
Another one of our primary focus areas for the school year is the social-emotional needs of our students. So we have set the goal to have less than 20% of our students scoring in the high-risk category for social functioning or competency, and that's measured by our BIMAS 2 universal screening tool, which we administer three times a year. Some strategies we use to reach this goal include the continuation of our positivity project as well as our Positive Behavior Interventions and Support, which is PDIS. That is the three-tiered evidence-based framework that we use to improve and integrate all of the data that we're collecting and student intervention such as, I'm sorry, and all the data we're collecting and affect practices of our, in our student outcomes. We are also working to review our BIMAS data and utilize that data to plan interventions such as our check-in, check-out. We're offering ongoing professional development opportunities for our staff members. And we're utilizing our restorative practice and promise zone specialists to support our tier-one teaching of SEL skills, post-restorative circles and conferences, as well as many other small group interventions and supports. And we'll put up our fall BIMAS screening data. And as you can currently see, we have 19% roughly of our population fall into the area of concern for both our social and academic functioning. So we're aiming to grow the green, the number of students that are in the green, decreasing the red in those green categories, utilizing the strategies we mentioned on that previous slide.
So as Greg told you earlier, we administered AIMS Web new this year, AIMS Plus for ELA and math. And we're going to be sharing our baseline data that we collected during the fall screen. We chose to start with 4th grade. These are our students that have had the most typical elementary school experience. They have had the most actual time in school. 46% of our 4th graders currently have an ELA composite score that places them in the green or proficient this past fall. You'll notice the trend begins to decrease the proficiency as things move into 3rd grade. They had, we found that the school students had the least amount of traditional elementary school experience, have had the highest number of reds. You'll see, so 22% of our 3rd graders are in the green this fall. And you'll see 2nd grade, it's 16% of our 2nd graders are proficient or in the green. 1st grade, they're 28% proficient. They're not the, our kindergarteners that are proficient. So what are we doing about it? We, well, first of all, we're just so relieved that they're all back by day of the week, and we can already see the impact that it's making. And we're hoping that it's going to make a large impact on our kids and growing the green. Some of our strategies have been planted. In order to do this, we are using some diagnostic assessments like the AIMS Web and the Haggerty to drill down to see their specific instructional needs for our students and review this data weekly during our PLCs. We have instructional TAs. We are lucky to have two of them this year supporting our win and working on one-to-one interventions with our students. We are utilizing Haggerty Canimical Awareness Program for our tier-one instruction, K2. And we are also using the Sunde Program for phonics instruction in K4. Okay, now we're going to talk a little bit about math here. Okay, we noticed the same trend in math as with our ELA data, and our 4th grade students that have had the most time in school had the most success on our universal screeners. So as you can see, we had 32% of our 4th grade students scoring in the green or proficient area in math. 3rd grade, 22%. 2nd grade had 24%. 1st grade had 23%. And kindergarten had 15%. So here are some strategies that we're using for our math success. We are administering common assessments and reviewing the data at our weekly PLC meetings. We are having our students set personal achievement goals based off their achievement and on these assessments. And we have, again, the instructional TAs that help us during our math win time in grades one through four so that the students can get focused interventions within smaller groups. Okay, a goal for our professional learning community this year is to focus on data literacy, which is the ability to read, understand, create, and communicate data as information. So each grade level PLC meets weekly, and this year, we focused our learning on our new AIMS Web screening tool. We also expand our data literacy so that we can use the information from these tools to impact instruction and student learn. And lastly, these are some things that we're very proud of at Roxboro Road Elementary School. Last year, March 25th, we had a virtual family math night, and we had 70, 79 students and family attend. We did it through Zoom. Prior to the event, we sent home snacks and math kits to the families. If they were virtual, they actually came and picked up their little bag. If not, if they were in school, attending school, we sent it home with them. John Wojcik started us off by leading a whole group math activity with all of the students. And then we put the students into breakout rooms by grade level, and they did like an escape room type activity. We gave raffle prizes for each grade level, and the parents completed a survey and gave feedback after the night was over. We had kindergarten orientation, and this year, we had 52 kindergartners and their families attending the event, and they were able to bring in their school supplies and meet their teacher. We also had Meet Your Teacher, where 347 people attended that event, and students, again, were able to meet their teacher and drop off their school supplies. And lastly, we have a food pantry at Roxboro Road Elementary School. We partner with St. Margaret's to provide food for our families. And as of December 1st, we have made 183 deliveries to families at Roxboro Road Elementary. And now, do you have any questions for us?
I, I do.
You may go first.
I saw the percentages, of course, of the, as we all did, of the, the reading and the math. Do you know what they were pre-pandemic? Because we know that some of these numbers were caused by the pandemic and that you're working hard to try to catch the kids up. But for comparative reasons, what was it like five days in school pre-pandemic?
With the implementation of our new universal screening tool, that AIMS Web Plus, we're missing historical data. This is the first year that that screener was implemented, so it's hard to compare data we have right now to previous data because we don't have, we didn't have a universal screening tool that collected data in the same manner.
We don't really have that apples-to-apples comparison for, for you guys, unfortunately.
We'll see, we're looking forward to seeing what we have. We're giving the screener again in January, so this will be a really good way to kind of see some, some movement and, and collect that historical data. And we'll have something to compare this fall to next fall.
Okay, that's, that's good to know. And also, food security has been linked to poor schools, poor, poor grades in school. And I see that you're doing as much as you can. So of course, if there's any suggestions of what you might need to help raise, you know, or lower, however way you want to look at it, that food insecurity, be curious to know.
I just, go ahead.
All right, I have some questions too. And thank you for sharing these statistics, and they are alarming. And thank you for sharing these statistics and they are alarming. And I know you're doing everything you can. Desperate time calls for desperate measures. Have we thought about maybe tutoring for students that need it? Maybe mentoring with high school students coming to help? Anything? I mean, we, earlier, we can address it.
We're still looking to begin our Big Brother, Big Sister program. Once we get a little bit clearer guidance from, with the county really on how we're able to implement that, that program. We're also looking yet again, depending on what the statistics and numbers say, to totally run an after-school math camp for our students. We did that just prior to the pandemic in 1920 with some pretty great and resounding success. So we've got the plans in place. We're just again, waiting to see with some of these new variants and whatever, how we can or when it's safe to pull that off to support our students.
We're also utilizing our instructional TAs for those small interventions. They're very busy during the day, working with interventions, sometimes one-on-one with students and hope that we can really push them towards success.
So you heard that they push in as part of our intervention block of time, our win time. And then they also spend time in the classroom as well, supporting the students throughout their each daily lesson and learning goal and strategy that they are sort of standard, thank you, learning standard that is out there for the students. So we're utilizing them. Thank you guys for the support and allowing that to happen, for sure. And we also have an additional AIS staff member this year. And we're clearly putting them to good use. Like I said, we're currently servicing 226 students in our AIS department. So again, try to desperate times. So we're pushing and trying to get as much as we can to support our students.
And we knew this was coming, so.
We did sadly, yes.
And I was glad to hear that students are setting goals for themselves.
We started that a couple of years ago. I think that's one of the most amazing and powerful things to watch a student look at and measure. Okay, if I'm at this point, what do I need to do specifically to help set a goal to improve my score? You know, eight, 10, 20 points, whatever it happens to be. It's amazing to sit and watch.
Yeah, that's a life skill.
It really, it's phenomenal to watch someone seven, eight, nine years old, even as young as five and six, set personal learning targets and goals for themselves.
Yeah, that's awesome. Also, I just had a question about the chronic absenteeism. Does that include students who had to quarantine? Okay. All right, thank you.
Yes, Mr. Crabtree.
I have to be careful what I say because Smith Rhodes in the house. First of all, Jennifer, are you a teacher? I apologize. I know Matt and I know, I know Sandy and I know Tracy, but I do not know you. I do not.
I'm an instructional officer at Roxboro. And I'm also math administrator.
Awesome. Very good. He'll keep you busy. So again, I can't say enough about this school. From the time Dan was principal and until other principals, this staff is an amazing staff. You know, as years ago, I was able to go in and work with kindergarten kids. And they work so diligently. And the professional groups that they meet, they, they come right out and say, what's the weakness? What can we do? You're just amazing. And I know in the, for all our presentations, they have the most people here at night. And I know many of you out there are Roxboro. Thank you so much. I would ask Mr. Stone, is that, I don't know about a lot of you, but C K L A W I N N. We need some kind of piece of paper for our next presentations. So we know what all these programs are. I'm an educator, but I don't know, I know what AIMS Web is plus, because it's probably a lot like AIMS Web. But we need to have as a board what these acronyms are so that we know what. I feel bad. I didn't want to, I didn't want to interrupt you on that.
Greg, do you want to?
You're the best. You're the best. It happens, it happens to me at Bosse's. That's even whatever. But then I do want to thank Matt and the school and the district for having the skate program from Bosse's in your school. I was able to visit it last year and how you weave them into the regular school. Because these are students that are having very difficult emotional. So thank you. There was one last thing. Again, new members. The social emotional. Can you explain real quickly how, take a first grade or second grade, that you do the BIMAS two data? How do you go about doing that with an elementary child?
The teachers complete the assessment based off of their interactions.
So it's more, it's not a, it's not an assessment type of thing. I believe at the high school, they use that.
There is. There's, I believe, 24 questions that it asks about the students. And then again, the teachers, based on their relationship, their knowledge, their understanding of the students completes or responds to the questions. And that's gets charted out as the data that you saw.
And, and the teachers have training on, so something comes up. And from this data, they know who to go to in the building.
Yeah, yes. So our counseling staff, our SEL staff within the building takes a look at that data. And then meets individually with either students as needed or comes up with suggestions, ideas, or strategies to implement within the classroom to benefit all of the students based on some of the trends that we see emerging.
Thank you so much for what you do.
With our BIMAS data as well, today, if there is a red flag, it will email the counseling staff and I'll get it all to you. So it's right at the top of our.
There's something that comes up as an emergent issue that needs attention.
I just wanted clarification on the BIMAS goal. You had a goal there of getting the concern level below 20%. I think that's how the goal was written, but it was below 20%. And there was a comment made that you wanted to bring the green up from the red, some color coding now. I just want to make sure I understand that correctly. So is your goal to increase the?
Right. So the first piece, hold on, let me just click back here just a second. So let's go back one more. So what you see at the top here, the goal of 20% or less, that was written as a part of our state improvement plan. That was a number, again, not necessarily having a lot of historical data to build the goals and improvement plans off of. So that was what we set prior to administering the BIMAS data. Then the BIMAS screening window kind of overlapped with the completion or the writing of this presentation. So that's kind of where you're seeing a little bit.
No, that clarifies it for me. Thank you. And somebody mentioned PLCs meet weekly, grade level PLCs?
Yes, sir, they do.
And I know this is really difficult, but I always ask this. Are you able to get any special areas in any of those meetings? Or is that where all the students are at the time typically?
They have their own PLC.
So they're not, okay.
Yeah, they're not, they're not at the grade level PLC unless there's something that they want to discuss with them.
Okay.
So they do occasionally come in and.
So they have access if they need to. That's, I guess that's.
Like a lot of times, Melissa Patraka will come to talk about PBIS stuff. So, you know, she does come in and talk about that, but they do have access, but they have their own PLC. And the sad part is too, we have to have people cover. So teachers and.
Yep, I understand.
So a lot of times they're covering to help us with that too. But they do have their own PLC and do have access to come if they need to.
All right, thank you. Other questions?
Right here.
Yes.
Thanks for presenting tonight. I'm really happy to see the emphasis on the social emotional. Because if the social emotional research shows if that's not intact, those math and those ELA scores, they're, they're not going to happen without that social emotional piece happening first. So kudos to you for monitoring that. I know that was more on the classroom teacher doing, you know, they're, now they have three times a year doing assessments of their kids and, you know, each child in their classroom. So I understand that, but it's well worth it for looking at the child. So a couple wonders I have is when you see those kids, like you were at 19%. You're not too sure where these kids in the critical area are going to land. But when they land there and you're saying, oh my gosh, you're at a critical level. I mean, usually before the BIMAS, we would find out by, okay, the kid's crying, they're screaming, yelling in the hall. But now, do you have enough support when you find out there's, you know, 19% of your kids are in this very critical, you know, emergency help area? Do you have enough support when you find that out with those children?
We've got more support this year than we've had, than we've ever had before. We're really fortunate. We've got a restorative practice specialist, a student engagement specialist, and a family engagement specialist that are all new to us this current school year. So that's three additional sets of hands that we have in skill sets to help really support our students. That being said, you know, is there ever enough? Well, you know, in a perfect world, we'd have even more, but I'm grateful for the, for the new faces, the new skills and supports that they're able to provide to our students. And you're 100% correct.
Mrs. Kramer, sorry, man. Those three were added along with the additional TA support that we also added. Because knowing that there is going to be deficits at each elementary school, we added additional TA support to focus mainly on, on the reading areas. Trying to think of there, were there any others on top of that that was? In the mental health.
Increased their services at our school as well.
So what was increased?
Any resources?
Mental health.
Mental health.
Okay.
Counseling.
Okay.
So they, they service up to 45 students. That's their maximum case load.
Okay.
We're filling that up pretty quickly too.
I bet you are.
We also work with access, the county agency to help again, provide additional resources and supports to our families. Engagement specialist doing a great job with helping to provide some of those tools and support for, for students to get to, to support the whole student. It's like you said, if the, the SEL components are not intact and supported, the rest of it isn't necessarily going to see the great, you know, efforts from our teachers.
So my last question or wonder is on your PLC groups. And I understand like you're looking over a lot of data. There's limited time. And do you ever get to the point, I mean supposedly like with the de fours, there's that point where, hey, this teacher's scores are really good on this assessment. Let's find out what she's doing, where people get to, I mean, that usually comes like is like the topping or after you get through everything else, do you find yourself being able to get to that point or not?
We do, yes.
Good.
It's really exciting to listen and to hear the ideas, the strategies that are being shared. One of the newer things that we also do this year is we have kid talks. So if a student is struggling either academically or behaviorally, we share, present on a particular student and then the team also offers, well, hey, what if you tried maybe doing this intervention? Trying to support a student in this particular way. So we do it both academically and behaviorally or emotionally for our students as well.
Nice. The check-in, check-out strategy. We've had that Jackie Beck did a training for us via Zoom video. And it's like, it's research-based and it's like really easy to implement. So.
Very easy and super powerful.
Yeah.
Really one of the things that Roxboro that we've learned is the power of relationships. And if we don't have a student connected to someone in the classroom, again, like you had said previously, our best efforts are probably going to fall short. So we really strive very hard, all of our, our staff at Roxboro, just to make connections and build relationships with our students.
Keep up the good work.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, I think that's it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, everybody. Appreciate it.
Okay, next up for BPT, we have Smith Road Elementary.
I'm going to have to share too, right? Okay, good evening, everybody. I am Lindsay Maloney. I am the building principal at Smith Road Elementary. My BPT chair was, had all intentions of attending with me to present, but she lost her voice. And she is at home resting. So it is myself presenting, but our BPT did all come together to help create this presentation. So just going to start off with a little overview of Smith Road. We currently have about 579 students. It's a decrease of about 30 students from last year. We have approximately 95 staff members. That's an increase of about eight or nine staff. Currently, we have 28 classrooms. Seven of those classrooms are our CTD special ed classrooms. It says they're an increase of six classrooms, which, which seems crazy. But that's because last year with the number of students that we had fully remote, our sections were obviously a lot lower. And I only put that up there to show you the difference of what it felt like in the building last year with 22 classrooms. And then now having, you know, 28 classrooms, it's, it's a big difference in having all 579 kids back in the building. We also have at Smith Road, our three special education 15 to one classrooms. And currently, we have 37 students in those programs. Last year, all my years, they're kind of mixing together. But last year, right before, I'm sorry, my first year, right before COVID, we actually had to add a third 15 to one classroom because the numbers were growing so much. In the past, we had always had two, an early primary and upper primary. But we have now expanded to three of those classrooms with 37 students. So we have two early primary and one upper primary. We also have at Smith Road, we welcomed the ENL program, the English as a New Language program. We welcomed them last year. So we currently have about 59 English language learners at Smith Road. We're at about 49.65% free and reduced lunch. It is pretty, last year we were 50%, so it hasn't moved much for us. We are a Title I building. And last year, our transient numbers, we had 88 students in and 79 students out. So a little bit about us. This is Smith Road's mission. We have had this mission in place for years, dating back to when Greg was the principal at Smith Road. We do use the mission to guide everything we do at Smith Road. We pull back at our meetings. These are on our agendas. And we always make sure that, you know, everything we do is centered around what our mission is, which is, you know, this is our purpose as a building. We also have our vision. This is where we want to see ourselves in three to five years. This has been our vision. This is now year three of the vision. So we use these when, you know, creating our building goals. So we're going to start off with chronic absenteeism. Last year, our percentage was 23 and a half percent chronically absent, which we celebrated as a building because we were actually the second, had the second lowest percentage in the district compared to Cicero L, who had the lowest. And it was something to celebrate for us because we, last year, that was our primary focus. We really, really, we set some, we set some plans in place and some procedures in the building to really target those students and those families that were chronically absent. And that's something that we're really, really proud of. We currently, you see 21, 22, I pulled this report the other day. We have 41% considered chronically absent, but that's based on, just like Greg said. This year, we are putting students in quarantine and we have students testing positive, which last year wasn't happening like it is this year. So although that number seems high, that, I mean, that's reality. We have 41% of the students missing 10% or more up till now. But what we're doing is we have bi-weekly, well, weekly, we have STAR meetings, which are our counseling department. We meet along with myself every Monday. And it's really a PLC about talking about kids and making sure they have the supports in place that they need socially, emotionally. We do the attendance monitoring bi-weekly. So what we do is I literally will pull up, pull in a port and report, an at-risk report. We sit down and we go through student by student and cross-check it with school tool and quarantines. And we're targeting those students that are chronically absent, not due to quarantine and not due to testing positive. And so we are on top of that again. We're still following the same procedures we have in place. We have a tiered approach for that. We start with the teachers because they're the first connection to the students. So we start with them reaching out to the students, the families, just checking in. If that doesn't help, it moves on to our counselor, who then that's like our tier two level. She again, takes the same approach, communicating with the families, building that relationship, trying to figure out what are the barriers for that student not attending. And then the third tier is myself. And I again, take the same approach. I don't use a scare tactic or the, you know, I'm, I'm really building that relationship with the family and trying to put every support in place for them to ensure that the. ensure that the students are coming to school. The other thing we started this year is a mentor program. So we have twenty-six staff members. We have actually thirty-five staff members that have voluntarily, they volunteered to be a mentor for our students. We currently have twenty-six students attached to those teachers. We started off by targeting our fully remote students. So I we asked teachers for the first three weeks to really keep a close eye on our students that were fully remote to ensure that they were transitioning back to school, and they were successful and feeling safe. And what we found was that the students that were fully remote really did transition back pretty well. So then our target then became there weren't many students that really needed that mentor program. So then we kind of switched it to our chronically absent, or our students that just needed that extra support. So this right here is just, I know it's hard to see, but these are some ideas that our mentors are doing to touch base with the students, build relationships and connect with the families. This morning, we had a mentor mentee celebration where we all came into the cafeteria for twenty minutes. The mentors brought their mentee, and we did a little holiday activity and just to kind of make connections. We are still focusing on bringing down that chronic absenteeism. We want to bring it down. Right. We're trying for five percent. But again, it's very difficult right now with the data and with our students, how many students we're sending out. So before we jump into our ELA and math, just a reminder of those multi-tiered systems of support. This is really what we do at Smith Road. We take a look at the whole child. So we're looking at the student both academically and socially emotionally. And the data that we are looking at this in in the real in the perfect world, this is what we would want our triangles to look like. We would want eighty percent of our students to respond to that tier one core instruction that all of our students get. Then approximately fifteen percent may need that tier two targeted intervention, and then five percent needing that intensive. So this is, this is really what we want our triangles and our data to look like. And this is what we're aiming for, just so that you guys can have an idea of where we're at. So social emotional biomass, just like Roxelle, we administered the screener. This is our fifth year admin administering the screener. We were one of the first schools to pilot the biomass. So Smith Road has some experience with this screener. This year is really the first year. Our goal this year is to get teachers digging into the data. We have not had a chance to do that. We started with the screener, learning about the screener, then COVID hit, and we just kind of fell short of really digging into the data and using it to to grow the green. So what we're doing as a building is we're utilizing a different report. Roxelle showed you, there's two reports you can pull from biomass. They showed you the one report which shows the cognitive functioning and the skill deficits. We as a building are utilizing this report a little bit more, which is the SCL Core Competency Report, and utilizing it two ways. In a tier two, tier three way, our STAR Committee, which is our counseling staff that meets once a week, we pull up this biomass data, and we have gone through every single student, every single class, and we've identified areas of of need. And what they're doing is they're just cross checking to make sure that their students that are already on our radar, or that if they're not, that we're making sure we're checking in to see. What we find is the students that are screaming and yelling and crying, those students are on our radar because they're making a lot of noise. We find the students that are sitting back quiet, they still have areas of need. So this is really helping us to identify that and to make sure that we're, you know, providing support for everybody. So the STAR Committee does that on a tier two, tier three level to make sure they're getting those counseling supports or small group skill development. And then as a building, we are actually starting tomorrow, our PLCs are going to dig into this data as classroom teachers. And our counseling department is facilitating that. They're going in, they have a presentation set up, they're going to meet with the teachers, teach them how to go in, look at the data, and then start identifying as a class, what areas of growth is the class need. These are the core competencies based on CASL, so self-awareness, self-management, social awareness, relationship, and responsible decision making. And we're finding in some, in most classes, you'll see maybe a third of the students struggling in one area, such as relationship skills. And so we're trying to figure out, okay, as a teacher, tier one, what can they do in the classroom to target those skills? We've got our social worker and our counselor going in and teaching some second step lessons with which focus on these skills. We have not had the opportunity to have a promise zone specialist yet. There's been some hiccups along the way for us. But once we do, we would like to start utilizing that promise zone specialist for those same things, kind of doing some skill building with the students that need it. So this is our biomass. One other thing, we're also focusing on the social emotional well-being of our staff. One thing that we are doing is we're starting a book study called on the book called Onward. And it's obviously voluntary, but it's really about it. I haven't read the book. I plan on joining the group. But from what I hear, it's about reminding teachers about why they came into this profession. A lot of the, a lot of them, a lot of us are, there's a lot on our plates. We've been through a lot, as you all know. And we're losing teachers. And so we really want to make sure that we're, we all went into this profession for a reason. And this book kind of just takes a look at us as professionals and reminds us why we want to be there. So we're starting that book study in a few weeks. So here's our ELA Ames web data. As it was mentioned before, there is no historical data because this is the first year with the screener. We chose to kind of put our K two early primary together on one slide. As you can see, the data really mirrors, it's very similar to Roxelle. We do have more than fifty percent of our students in the red, which is concerning. But we do have plans in place to address that. So this is currently our K two. I'll just show you three, four, and then I'll talk about ways that we are addressing it. Our three, four data, same as what Roxelle said, you see, third grade, there is kind of similar fifty-four students in the red, thirty-six in the green. And then when you look at the fourth grade, it's looking pretty good. You know, still room for growth, but that's kind of looking more like that tiered triangle I showed you at the beginning, which those are our students that had those K one foundational regular school years. So those foundational skills were kind of built. So this is for our ELA. Some things that we're doing, our PLCs this year really focused on writing SMART goals. We took the time to learn about SMART goals, to write SMART goals based on the ELA and math Ames web data. They're not perfect. We're still learning. SMART goals can be tricky to write. And so we're in the process of kind of learning how to do that. But we wrote SMART goals. We are some things that the grade levels are doing. We are providing win, which is that what I need now, thirty-minute intervention block. It does vary from grade level to grade level. Some grade levels are switching students, and they're going to a different teacher based on the need or the skill deficit. Some grade levels are choosing to do it within their classrooms on a on a smaller scale. They kind of had that choice this year. One thing we're doing, though, is we have our two instructional TAs. And we were so fortunate enough to have four and a half AIS teachers at Smith Road. So between those four and a half AIS teachers and the instructional TAs, which is an additional six and a half people, their schedules all have the grade level win time carved out. So that is six and a half additional people that are working during that thirty-minute tier two targeted time. So smaller groups targeted intervention based on the skill deficits or, you know, what the students need. So that's one thing that we're doing. The building is heavily involved in learning about the science of reading. They are, you know, we're continuing to learn about how we can improve our instruction. They are, we are implementing, obviously, Hegarty and Sande, which is that phonemic awareness and phonics explicit instruction for our students that they're they're all receiving. Our fourth grade is choosing to, they didn't have to implement Sande. It was kind of a, this year, at least, it was, it was a, they had the choice to do it or not. The fourth grade team recognized that our current fourth graders never received that explicit instruction. So they've agreed to be to be teaching that to every single one of our fourth grade students. So that's something the fourth grade team is doing. And really, another thing we're doing is PLCs, sharing ideas, sharing strategies, and also developing, they're really working on common assessments. That's a tricky thing, but they are still working on creating common assessments so that they can have those conversations, like you mentioned earlier, about looking at data and saying, well, your students, your class did really well in this. What are you doing? How are you teaching this? That's something that the grade level teams are working towards. Math, very similar to what you saw. Again, more than fifty percent there in the red. Our focus obviously is to grow the green. And keeping in mind, too, that the Ames Web, this is different for us that we're not used to. The R I M I data that we used to look at, assess the students from the beginning of the year, but it was on the end of your benchmark. So the assessment throughout the year didn't grow, if you know what I'm saying. It was they they were assessing the student at the beginning of the year, they were assessing the student on the end of your benchmark. Whereas Ames Web, it grows with the student. So each assessment, if, for example, the students that are in the yellow, really, if they remain in the yellow, that's still showing growth because the assessment is not end of year standard at the beginning. It's kind of, I'm not sure if I explained that correctly, but something different that we're not used to in looking at data. So it's a mind shift for us as well. Third, fourth grades, very similar. Again, fourth grade looking better than our K three. And some things we're doing for math, we are targeting, teachers are really learning more about number talks, how to implement those number talks, and having good mathematical discourse or discussion with their students and pushing students to think through the problem solving. So they're focusing on that. They're also focusing on the program. Our new, it's, it's, we've had it for a few years, but they're they're learning and continuing to implement our math tier one instruction. We also have an AIS, because we have four and a half AIS teachers, we, I made the decision to make one of our AIS teachers solely math. So one of our AIS teachers is targeting math instruction. And so she's able to really focus on just math intervention and focus on those students. Our professional learning communities, these are the four guiding questions that we use and that is centered around, you know, De For's work with the PLCs. We are working on developing SMART goals, as I mentioned before. We're working on data protocol, data literacy, just like Roxelle said. We recognize we have a lot of data at our hands, and that is really good, but we need to know how to look at it and had how to have conversation about it, and then how to drive our instruction. We are utilizing kid talks, which we have had in place for a few years, where teachers are, can bring concerns to the table. I know you mentioned special areas and our service providers, they're invited to have kid talks with the grade levels. So if they're having an academic or a behavioral challenge, they can bring a kid talk to that grade level and brainstorm ideas and strategies with that team. That was something that we just kind of realized as we were doing this work. And as a former special area teacher, it's nice to be able to have those supports and know you've got a team of people. I do think having department PLCs are much more beneficial. I know we had a PE one, and that was very beneficial as a PE teacher, but then to also be able to touch base with the grade levels. Sharing ideas, all hands on deck. Like I said, we've got all of our staff supporting, attending PLCs, attending our win time, and just supporting each other. And our celebrations, I'm just gonna play this quick little video and then talk about it here. It's thirty seconds. So the reason why I play that is because that was one, we were fortunate enough to, we were, we invited downbeat percussion, some of you may have heard of them, to Smith Road Elementary. They are the official Buffalo Bills drumming percussion band. And they came and performed for us at Smith Road. And that day was amazing because that was the first time we had done something as a building in a couple of years. We brought everyone together. We were outside, fully masked. We followed the rules. But it was the first time we were all together. Teachers were crying, kids were laughing, kids were dancing. And it was just really nice to pull everyone together as a community. And that kicked off our walkathon, which we then raised enough money to meet our goal for a new playground that day. So we're just really celebrating the small things, getting back to somewhat normal and in being with each other. That's kind of our, we try to focus on relationships and celebrating the small, the small wins that happen in school every day. These are, this is kind of Smith Roads motto. It's been that way for a few years. Every student can learn. Success is our only option. This is my favorite day of the year when our seniors walk through the building. And every year, we get a great turnout at Smith Road. This was last year. And it's really great to see these students that started in kindergarten as five-year-olds with us, you know, have made it this far, and they're on their way to a successful future. These are our BPT members. I'd like to thank all of them because they helped with this and opening it up for any questions.
Thank you. Questions?
I do. Sounds like you're doing quite a lot to get the kids back on track after COVID. And that's good to hear. But I'm very curious about this first slide. I just lost it. The one with all the little post-it notes on it?
Yep.
I saw notes with a Sparty and just the social emotional extra touch for the kids leaving notes in in lockers.
Yeah.
Is that what that's about?
Yeah. So that was just an activity we did with our mentors to share, because this is new to our building. It was a way for them to share what what are some things the mentors are doing with their mentees. And so other people could kind of see. And there's some really creative and cool things happening that they're coming up with.
Yeah, fantastic to lift spirits.
Mm-hmm. Yep.
Yes, Dr. Kramer.
Lindsay, kudos to you on the onward book by Elena Aguilar. It is powerful because I truly believe that you mentioned taking care of staff because staff need to take care of our kids. And if we take care of our staff, that trickles down to the kids. And that is key. So kudos to you. And there's also a workbook. There's the actual book.
Yep.
And then there's the workbook that she has that takes you through some exercises that you could do on building resilience and building the staff's SEL. And that in turn will empower them to do that for our kids. So I just can't tell you how much kudos and admiration I have, no matter how you came upon that. But that is excellent.
Thank you. Thank you.
Other questions? Bob?
Now that Roxborough's left, I've said the number one school, Smith Road.
Yeah, probably.
The enrollment at your school, even though it's down, you are one of the largest school districts or school. And I've asked you this a lot of times, you know, you've answered for me, but it's increased since three, four years ago. And kudos, I guess somebody used the word that Dr. Kramer was using, that you have such a mixture of students in that you have specialized, you have ELL, and and so forth. Kudos to Mr. Bowles, because he, since he's been superintendent, the first time I met him, he said, look at the class sizes. And so he added teachers to Smith Road this year because he wants that class size to be done. And therefore, you can do the social emotional things, and you can do more academic. More homework for Mr. Stone. I know, based on what these teachers are doing, that red is going to really shrink. It is really going to shrink. I know it. Okay, it's a new testing thing. Can you, when they do it again, give Mr. Bowles for a Friday letter so we can see the growth? We get a Friday letter from the superintendent. We don't have to have you present or anything. But if We don't have to have you present or anything, but if you want to. But I like to see the growth because I know, I'm not worried about the red. I'm not worried about the SEL because I know these teachers are working very, very hard in all our buildings to do that. So I, it doesn't worry me at all, but I, I think the board would like to see, I think Terry would definitely like to see the changes. Because we always see the beginning of the year and we never really get to see the, the end. Yeah, because it's a different testing. Lindsay, again, you do a wonderful job. You've been there three years now, right? And you're doing a great job.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Okay, thank you. Other questions?
Mary? Not a question, but I just want to say thank you for a great presentation. Just startling statistics, but it sounds like you're doing what you need to do to address the situation, pulling people in where you need to pull them in. And you know, we appreciate everything you're doing. And I agree with Bob, we, you know, because this is, we're COVID and, you know, we're dealing with the aftermath of having the schools go remote. We need more frequent updates to our progress than we've had in a normal year. So, but thank you.
Thank you.
If there are no other questions, I'll say thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. There we go. We are at the part where we have the comments from the audience. I just want to review before we go into that quickly. Our rules, because we, this is starting to grow and we haven't had this participation in a while. But again, providing time to hear comments from the community is, is important. It's not a requirement, but it's a best practice that we've used here in North Syracuse. Our policy is to limit the comments to three minutes each speaker. And I do want to stress to the speakers, please feel free, encourage you to leave whatever you have in writing. We not get, get enough time. Also, the board, again, they're here to listen. They don't respond in this forum. And any issues involving students or personnel are not permitted. So the first speaker I have here is Michael DeVero. You come forward and make sure the microphone is on here. Is it? Okay. Perfect. Thank you.
Okay, can you hear me okay?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. My name's Mike DeVero. My daughter, my granddaughter is in kindergarten at Bear Road. And thanks for, you know, allowing me to speak. I'll keep it short. Just want to address the district's protocol around COVID. And, you know, what I'm being told in my understanding is that the policies that the district follows are the policies that the county health department recommends, which I think comes from the state. You know, and then on cue this past Friday, some of this may change hopefully quickly. But prior to last Friday and currently in place, my understanding is that if a student is without a mask and exposed to a positive case within six feet of that person, of that other student, then the student must quarantine for 10 days before being allowed to return to school. And there's no ability to test back in. This occurs during lunch since, since the students are eating in their classroom and are without a mask for more than 15 minutes while eating within six feet of each other. I made inquiries to the nurse, the principal and the director of elementary education. And all three were very responsive, no complaints there. And, but, but they all told me that there was no way to avoid students being exposed during lunch. So, you know, from my standpoint, I kind of broke it down. I said, there's two ways that we can avoid exposure during lunch. First way is obvious. Don't be, you know, have the student not be without a mask for 15 minutes or longer. The other would be not to have them be within six feet of each other while they're not wearing a mask. With all the brain power in this district, all the smart people, I would think that we could figure this out and find a way to protect the students from exposure. Because at the end of the day, the, the, it's the exposure that we're concerned about, right? And secondarily, then the quarantining becomes a real problem, 10 days. And, you know, right on cue, these two presentations with chronic absenteeism and low scores. And everybody's, you know, blaming it on COVID. Well, let's try to fix it. So I would think that we could find a solution and, and not accept and not accept this. Separate the kids into staggered lunch groups, have half the kids eat and separate them so that they're farther than six feet apart. Have, you know, have the other half of the room go in another room with their masks on and wait.
You had your, your three minutes to just ring back there, but.
Okay.
Yep. If you could wrap it up, if you have a final thing, that'd be great.
Sure, sure. Have them eat within 14 minutes. And and then basically it's a moot point possibly, the test to stay policy that the state is recommending and that Ryan McMahon and the county are recommending and encouraging school districts to adopt. I'm asking that you approve that policy immediately. Let's not wait. Let's not continue to make excuses about COVID and, and why that's contributing to absenteeism. You're going to have that in your control. So I'm asking you to adopt the test to stay policy immediately.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yep. Your next speaker is Alison Rick. You're here, Alison?
Good evening. My name is Alison Rock and I will be discussing funding the school district have received from COVID-19. An article from Syracuse.com reported that the North Syracuse School District received $11 million from the American Rescue Plan. ARP supported the ELC reopening schools plan. The top priority of these funds are testing and promotion of the COVID-19 vaccine. Testing COVID-19 products are EUA only and have been recalled, many of them. The COVID-19 vaccine has no long-term studies on the safety and effectiveness of children. However, the CDC has a template on how schools can support COVID-19 vaccination. I would like to know if the school district will be implementing the lessons into their curriculum and if the vaccination will be held on school property during school hours. Our school district has also accepted money from the CARES Act and the CRRSA Act. I would like you to confirm this and the amount received. If by accepting these funds, is the school district now committed to the crisis response cooperative agreement? Under terms and conditions of COVID-19 funds, the school district must comply with existing and/or future unknown directives and guidance from the CDC and the HHS. Funding recipients must assist government and federal orders related to quarantine, isolation and mandates. If a COVID-19 vaccine mandate is put in place, will the school board and parents be able to challenge and oppose this implement, excuse me, implementation? Or by accepting these funds, were our parental rights surrendered? The school must provide CDC access to COVID-19 data collected, but not limited to data relating to COVID-19 testing. What personal information does the CDC want access to? The goals and funds are to support jurisdictional COVID-19 prevention, preparedness, response and recovery, including school-based health programs. Will the North Syracuse District be implementing a school-based health program and clinic? And if so, what will be provided? I would like to know what the two-year plan is for our school district and will the agreement have a June 2023 expiration? And finally, I'd like to know where and what the funding has been used for. Thank you, and I look forward to hearing your response.
Thank you. Okay, and lastly, we have Dorian Coombs.
Good evening. My name is Dorian Coombs and I'm a part-time pre-KTA at North Syracuse Early Education Program. My husband and I had three children graduate from CNS and our youngest child is now a freshman at North Syracuse Junior High. Tonight, I would like to share with you some of my concerns about COVID-19 vaccines for children. After receiving a district email from our superintendent, Dan Bowles, dated October 21st, 2021, I began doing research on the safety and efficacy of giving COVID-19 vaccines to our children. Dan's email was in regards to a survey for parents or guardians to fill out on behalf of the Onadoga County Health Department. The email hinted, quote, "There would likely be a demand for vaccinations among those aged five to 11." Eight days later, on October 29th, 2021, the Pfizer vaccine was approved for five to 11-year-olds. I strongly oppose mandates for COVID-19 vaccinations on children due to questionable efficacy and safety concerns. Vaccine effectiveness has been in question. We were told that the vaccine would stop the spread of infection. But as we now know, vaccinated individuals may still spread COVID-19 to other people, especially if they experience a, quote, "breakthrough case." According to the CDC, a breakthrough case is when a person tests positive for COVID-19 at least two weeks after becoming fully vaccinated, either receiving a one-dose vaccine or the second dose of a two-shot vaccine. The Advisory Committee on Immunization Practices, the ACIP, met in November 2021 to write a letter in opposition of the administration of Pfizer bio-intex COVID-19 mRNA genetic vaccine to children five to 11 years of age. They discussed how safety measures are being ignored. And I quote, "Although we are hundreds, if not thousands of times above the safety signal that would have typically halted these vaccines in the past, there seems to be no oversight by an independent safety committee to pause the program to investigate reported adverse events and death caused by these shots." The current practices went counter to CDC and WHO's own guidance from 2006 for scientific assessments of efficacy and risk in terms of morbidity, mortality and financial impact for similar viruses such as influenza. Just recently, the US Bears data from December 14th, 2020 to November 26th, 2021, reports one death that occurred in an 11-year-old girl from Georgia, vaccinated on September 14th, 2021, prior to the authorization of Pfizer's COVID vaccine in the five to 11 age group. The second death, Bears ID number 1890705, occurred in a five-year-old girl who died four days after receiving her first dose of Pfizer. A total of 1,581 adverse events have been reported in the five to 11 age group since November 1st, 2021.
Please, just a final statement.
In summary, it is just too soon to make the COVID-19 vaccine for children mandatory for attendance and public education.
Thank you. Please, in all cases, anything you want to leave with the clerk, we'll all get that in writing. Thank you. Okay, moving to Board of Education Committee reports, I'll start with Mrs. Scanlon on policy.
Thank you, Paul. Our policy committee, we met last Tuesday on November 30th via Zoom. We reviewed three policies and two are on tonight's board agenda. One is an amend and re-adopt and the other is a re-adopt without change. And our next meeting is not till January, it's Tuesday, January 18.
Thank you. And Mr. Crabtree, I know you did not, you don't have a legislative report. The next meeting is January 5th, I believe, but do you have a BOSI's comment?
Okay, okay. You, you did part of my speech. That's fine. You all received, it's been a while since we met, BOSI's will be meeting next week. So you all received through Jill, the agenda and also my short report. One thing we talked about, which pertains to the school district is the Virtual Learning Academy. Michael, you're, are you involved, you're involved with that? So districts have an opportunity, if students have a medical problem and they have a note from their doctor, or if there's significant behavior because of COVID, they're able to go to our Virtual Learning Academy at BOSI's. Presently, North Syracuse has 54 students K through 12, I believe, in this program. Doreen Bergman, which is our, one of our leaders overlooks it and Catherine Dotton, who is wonderful, looks at the day-to-day. We have, I want to tell you how many teachers, 15 teachers. So a teacher might be teaching second and third grade, but it's the whole county, excuse me, all BOSI's. We have a Virtual Learning Academy and that's it.
Okay, thank you. Superintendent Bowles.
Thank you. As you see, we had the first two BPT presentations and we're trying to provide at least some uniformity as far as data. But you can see the quality of what you're, what the work is happening. One of the things that you were hearing, I think from Lindsay as well as Roxelle, the amount of new staffing that has been placed at certain buildings. And we, we've looked at what we've done in the past and we used to try to just put, make everything equal across the board. But when there is higher need, we're taking our resources now and placing them in those areas of higher need. And you're hearing and seeing some of that. One of the things that happened last week is we held here at the district office, our first clinic for students that are five to 11 years old that a local pharmacy put on for us. There's approximately 140 students on a voluntary basis by the family decided to have their children vaccinated. The second dose will be on December 23rd for those families. And we're, we're looking, as parents want, we're looking to continue to pair up with, with families. If there's an interest, we will host the site, but there is no mandate at this time. I want to emphasize again, there is no mandate for students to be vaccinated in school. Other things that were going on, we had our, our boys' basketball had a win on Friday night against Elmira. So again, as you were listening about the musicals, we were still trying to make sure those other passions for students are continuing. Our boys' hockey team in their first game won 10 to three over Ithaca. So again, you're seeing a continuation of our, our athletic programs excelling at this time. I also had a meeting and Terry usually follows me and I apologize if I, if I say too much, but we had our canteen meeting. We meet the high school junior high in the canteen and, and we meet once a month to go over common issues or concerns and share strategies and ideas. And again, it was very productive and we, we enjoy the, the collaboration amongst all the groups. And the last thing I have is that on Wednesday, we will have our referendum vote. And it starts at 6:00 AM and it goes till 9:00 PM. And I just recommend you come out and vote. Thank you.
Okay, Board of Education comments, I do have a few, but I'll defer to whoever first. Start, looks like you're ready.
Hi, I'm, thank you. A bunch of us went out and saw the 12 angry jurors. And we actually watched Mark's daughter perform, which she did a great job. But a great job and the clear masks, so smart. So we can actually see the expressions on the kid's face that made it almost look like they weren't wearing one at all. That was, that was a brilliant move. We did meet again with the canteen and that has been going very well for approximately a year now. Communication is expanding and it's wonderful. And let's see, the, I, there was an issue with some lighting that, with the Roxborough that will be, that Dan has teams looking at, there is no lighting in one of the parking lots. And we're looking for a solution for those who might be concerned.
Thank you. Other comments?
Just as a follow-up, I don't know, Bob, you were going to say something, you can go ahead. Yes, we are definitely on that issue with the lighting. Don, Matt Irwin have really taken a hard look, not only on the lighting for the sidewalks, but the parking lot. And it looks like there was a previous issue as far as the lighting in the And it looks like there was a previous issue as far as the lighting in the parking lot that's being addressed. It may be addressed. I don't know, Don, how soon do you think that will?
We've issued a purchase order to install at least one light pole back there, and we're investigating the second one. So we've identified the problem, and we're trying to get it fixed as fast as we can.
Fantastic to hear. Thank you.
Mr. Crabtree.
Okay. Top 10. Number one, Sandy Ruffo that you met tonight. Not only is she our representative, I think, Area 7, I'm not sure, 4, I can't remember. 4, sorry. She's also vice president. She's one of the vice presidents of the New York School Boards. She's an amazing person. Appreciate her coming tonight. But she has a column that we get every other month with all the activities. I don't know how she keeps up with it. She's an amazing person. I didn't go yesterday. I sat in front of my fireplace and watched some football, but our marching band, I believe, marched in the holiday parade yesterday, God bless them, at 5:00 with Santa trailing them. And then Xavier, you got to do some recruiting here. I did go to the basketball game on Friday night. They won 62 to 47, and there is an amazing, get ready, Buddy Bayheim. There's an amazing freshman, Andrew Benedict, that had eight threes.
He actually plays in my program.
There you go. I knew you would have him on your team. He's an amazing, he's a freshman. And, you know, again, Elmira, I don't know how good they are, and they'll be playing Rome tomorrow night in Rome. But I just sat there, and I just was amazed. So you've probably done all the training of him. That's awesome. He's amazing, and he's a ninth grader. So I am a member of the CNS Optimist Club, and I know I sent you an email to say I was at the high school because I don't want to get in any trouble. I was up there today. I do a 10 to 15-minute presentation on having students in the English classes, thanks to Ken Cherry. We need some kids to get an oratorical contest. I know Dan looks forward to it every year. We've not had it for three years. So I'm up there recruiting students to enter an essay and oratorical contest so that we, and the kids. So what I wanted to tell you, they were amazing today. I was there when they changed classes. Every student gave me eye contact when I was in the room. I was trying to teach them how to give a speech. The teachers were amazing to let me come in. I just, I felt very comfortable. Without the mask, I wouldn't know there was COVID. These kids were amazing. Now, I always have a sad thing, and it's happy, but it's also sad. Even though CNS football team, they made it to the semifinals, and they played a very powerful team. One of our teachers, Casey Brown, is the head coach for CBA, and I couldn't be prouder of Casey leading his team to the state championship. I think that even though he isn't a coach here of our football team, we need to honor him for what he has done for young people. He also is our JV lacrosse coach. But here's something people don't know. On December 1st, his dad died, two days before this game. And he told me personally that, you know, the team and the school district have helped him through it. His dad actually taught in the same office, had the same chair as he did. He was a phys ed teacher, I told Joel about this, phys ed teacher at our junior high, and then later went to Beeville and was the principal in Beeville. His mother, Jerry Brown, was a social studies teacher. I just think it shows what we can do as a community to help somebody through a difficult time. And I wish Casey the best during this difficult time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Crabtree. And just a couple things I wanted to add, and surprised you didn't beat me to this one, but in the paper and on Syracuse.com, if you didn't see the article on our coach, Kyle Martin, who found out there are some students on a team that didn't have sneakers, and he investigated, found out what team it was, and instead of singling out students, bought 14 pairs of sneakers out of his own pocket for another team. I thought that was fantastic. It's on Syracuse.com if you want to look that up. Great story. And you should have at your place setting the Darkangelon Company internal audit. I just want you to know, this is, it's being shared with you. At some future meeting, we will need to accept it. We're not going to rush that sometime in the next year, but it's pretty self-explanatory. I didn't think it was necessary to have a presentation on it, but I want you to have that for a while, take a look at it. And you can get questions to me or to me through, to Don, if you have any questions on this. But please take a look at that. It breaks you out a universe into financial, non-financial risk. It's our internal audit on risk. So when you go through that, you can look at how the risk categories are weighted. You can look at our risk appetite, the board here, before my time, we have, we've adopted a moderate risk appetite. That's, they told me at the audit committee, that's pretty standard for school districts, just so you're aware of that. Because when you look at the dashboard, they have a nice color-coded dashboard to look at the risks in red, green, yellow. Moderate is an acceptable risk. When you look at the report itself, and I don't, I'm just trying to make this a little easier, it took me a while to get my brain around it. When you look at it, just be aware, when you read the current year status, that's listed first, and then you go through and look at the prior year observations. So you're seeing right away what's been remedied already in the first paragraph. So just make sure, when you look at that, it kind of reads backwards for me. I've always struggled with that. But as we move forward, unless we decide otherwise, it was recommended by the auditor and accepted by the committee, we'll be looking at some areas next year, accounts payable, compliance with bidding, and they recommended compliance with the federal dollars that are coming in to audit that. So that's probably what we'll be looking at. But again, we'll get, we'll at some point, and we'll give you a heads up on that, have this on the agenda in '22 for acceptance by the board. So I just wanted to be aware of that, and you have some time to look at that. And I just want to make a mention that we did have a retreat a couple of weeks back already, and I thank everybody for, was able to put in time for that. I thought it was valuable. I think the feedback from everybody who was there enjoyed it and felt it was useful. Sorry for the ones who couldn't make it, but we'll try and do this again. And in that regard, or in that, along those lines, we'll be putting out a self-evaluation tool we discussed at that meeting and use that kind of as a point of discussion for a little mini retreat where we can carve out some time in an executive session to kind of reflect on our own performance. So that's all I wanted to mention. There is no other comments. I will move along and ask for a motion to accept the minutes of the meeting of November 15. Motion from Mrs. Kruger, second from Dr. Kramer, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Pose that is carried. And if I can get a motion for B, C, and D, the classification of placement of students in special ed, motion from Mr. Thorne, second from Ms. Scanlon. And that is classification in school and the disabled students in the preschool and home instruction, as usual, B, C, and D, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Pose that is carried. Motion for E, the acknowledgement of the business office reports for September and October. Motion from Ms. Kruger, second from Mr. Herman, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Pose that is carried. Discussion acts items 6A, please, a motion for appointment of voting system specialists. Motion from Mrs. Scanlon, second from Mr. Moody Wuzik, any discussion there? Seeing none, all in favor? Pose? Anything else? Okay. B, amendment to the resolution authorizing the North Syracuse Central Superior Boundry Line Agreement. That would have been in the Friday letter describing that. Motion, please. Motion from Mr. Marizio, second from Ms. Kruger. Thank you. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Pose that is carried. Motion for C, declaration of non-marketable, marketable surplus. Motion put that before us. Motion from Mrs. Kruger, second from Ms. Dr. Kramer. Lot of adding machines in there, I noticed. No discussion, all in favor? Pose that is carried. And a motion for policies D and E, motion from Mrs. Scanlon, second from Mr. Thorne, any discussions on the policies that Mary presented to us earlier? Seeing none, all in favor? Pose carried. Thank you. Instructional personnel report A, motion place that before us. Motion from Mr. Marizio, second from Mrs. Scanlon. Before, in that report, you will see we are acting on some tenure, three of them, in particular, they were in the Friday letter previous to the one we just received, just pointing that out. Seeing no discussion, all in favor? Pose that is carried. B, support staff personnel report, Mr. Thorne, motion second from Dr. Kramer, that is before us, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Pose that is carried. And administrative personnel report C, motion to put that before us. Motion from Mrs. Kruger, second from Dr. Kramer, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Pose, and that is carried. I'm going to make a motion to move into executive session and ask for a second. The motion is for the purpose of hearing a parental appeal of the superintendent's decision to review a legal matter with action to follow on that appeal. And for the purpose of reviewing the employment records of three individuals with no action to follow. If I could get a second, second from Mr. Herman, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Pose that is carried. And a motion, please, for adjournment. Motion from Ms. Kruger, second from Ms. Scanlon, any discussion? All in favor? Pose that is carried. We are in executive session.
So the big question right now, the parents start at 7:50. I don't know, there's several things on executive session. We'll have to wait until we can try to start as quickly as possible for the parent appeal.